All right, welcome. We are going to call the meeting to order and we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. So I am not President Close. I am Lori Fong. I'm the Vice President and she is not able to be here tonight, so I will be taking over my very first meeting, so everyone is going to be bearing with me tonight. So it is my distinct pleasure to be able to begin tonight with swearing in of our newest board member, Alegría de la Cruz. So we're going to go up there. She says it feels like we're getting married with this oath. Loyalty Oath of Office. Aye.
Aye. Alegría de la Cruz.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, trustee De la Cruz. We have one action from closed session to report. During the closed session, the board acted to authorize the district superintendent, or designee, to notify one or more temporary certificated employees presented in closed session pursuant to Ed. Code Section 44-954 that they will be released at the end of the 2018-19 school year. I'm going to need a motion to pass this. Oh. I'm reporting this out. We did vote on it. Next on the agenda, do we have any statements of abstention? C. 3. We just did that.
This is the expulsion.
It's right here. So the other thing to report out is that there was a student expulsion. It was case number 28/1925. And I need a motion for that.
Move Resolution 28, 1925.
Second.
So moved by Director Sheffield and seconded by Director Medina. Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director Medina?
Aye.
Director De la Cruz? Director Fong?
Aye.
Director McCormick?
Aye.
Motion passes. Any statements of abstention? Adjustments to the agenda. So I will be... The items of the agenda tonight on salary schedules and contracts have generated concern as communicated to the board and to the superintendent over the past week. As we do not have a full board in place tonight to fully hear and discuss the issues, as President Close actually regrets that she cannot be here due to a serious family illness and trustee Manieri is out of town. Therefore, I will pull items E. 9 and E. 10 and items F. 8, 9, and 10 to be placed on the next board agenda because the full board should be present for this vote. And as always, we really appreciate the public input and know that many were coming tonight or are here tonight to make comment and address these items, and we are still going to take those comments tonight during public comment, items not on the agenda if you'd like to offer them tonight.
Vice President Fong, I'd like to correct. I believe you're pulling of item 9 and 10, E. 9 and 10?
Yeah, that's what she said. Yes.
Okay. Is that correct, Lori?
Yeah, you had mentioned 8 and 9.
Okay. Okay, yeah, no, it's 9 and 10.
Perfect, okay.
On E. items.
E. 9 and 10.
Okay. And then F. item?
F. 8, 9, and 10.
Got it.
And I will also be pulling item F. 6, the parcel tax update, again, due to not having a full board present tonight to hear this critical information. Do I have a motion for this?
I will move to pull items E. 9 and E. 10 as well as...
Okay, it's all a learning. We're all in education. So since those items are pulled, what you'll be moving is the approval of the other E. items.
Okay.
All right, so we are going to be approving the consent items.
E. through, okay, I am moving. We're going to pull items E. 1 through 8.
1 through 8. And 11.
And 11. As well as items F. 1 through 5.
Not at the same time? Just E.
I'm done.
Okay, we're only moving the consent items that the board will approve, excluding the ones that Director Fong pulled. Only E. items at this point.
That makes it much easier.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Just a point of order. We're on E. already or where are we?
Yeah, we're not there yet.
Okay, we're on approval of agenda, okay.
Yeah. Are we crystal clear? All right, so motion was made by Director Sheffield, seconded by Director...
Kurt McCormick.
Jill, Director Jill. Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director McCormick?
Aye.
Director De la Cruz?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director Medina?
I'm not clear on the motion.
Okay, so all of the E. items that were not pulled.
Are you going to repeat it? Pardon me?
Should I repeat it?
Yeah.
We are approving consent items E. 1 through E. 6. We are going, we are pulling also E. 7, which is a tentative agreement.
And the 11s.
No, 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 this is consent. We are approving consent items E. 1 through E. 7. We are pulling...
And 11. I know, but they're doing it now.
Oh, we didn't do it in minutes. Oh, we're adjustments of the agenda, right.
Right, adjustments of the agenda. We are on... Right.
E. 1 through 7 and E. 11. Okay, so we're back on C. 5?
C. 5.
Do I have any adjustments to the agenda?
That's you. You just did that.
Okay. Do we have to prove that?
No.
Okay. We're on C. 6. Yes. Board member requests for information.
Was there a request for information about May 22nd from the board and the potential of the Red for Ed rally and the possibility of moving that board date? Is that correct?
Yes, so is that a possibility? Can we move the May 22nd board meeting so that we can attend that event?
I will check all the board member's schedules and if it's a possible, we will have that. It has to be a board action. I'll have it on the May 8th board meeting. Okay?
I have a request. My request is specific to... I really feel in terms of like our ongoing long-term discussion around equity, eventually moving towards a unified Santa Rosa district. So my request for information is asking what the legal requirements would be to form a Santa Rosa Unified District from the Santa Rosa City High School District to incorporate all elementary districts in the city of Santa Rosa to become one. So if you get information around that, the different means that the Santa Rosa district could lead an effort to become one, I'd appreciate that. And then I also would like to request information about the different ways students are currently able to enroll for summer school, if that could be provided to me at a later time. Thank you.
Okay, so we will get that information, just for clarity, on the request for information regarding the, I just want to make sure it's clear, unification, potential unification of the high school district and the eight feeder districts that feed to the high school district, including our own elementary district?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there, no other board member requests for information? All right, we're moving to approval of the minutes from the regular board meeting held on April 10th.
Move to approve the minutes of April 10th as presented.
Second. Motion was made by Director Medina and seconded by Director McCormick. Take the vote. Director Medina?
Aye.
Director McCormick?
Aye.
Director De la Cruz?
So you would abstain.
I'm going to abstain and just a kind of clarification here. So you have me voting in all of the things that happened after I was voted onto the board as yes, but I didn't actually vote, so that might be a place to just do some...
So we need to do, make that adjustment on the minutes. Okay, thank you.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. On C. 8, it's the approval of minutes of the special board meeting held on April 16th, 2019. Do I have a motion for that?
Move to approve the April 16 minutes as presented.
Second.
So that was made by Director Medina and seconded by Director Sheffield. Vote. Director Medina?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director De la Cruz?
I'm going to abstain. I wasn't at that meeting.
Director Fong? Abstain. Director McCormick?
Aye.
And the motion passes. The minutes pass. We are at public comment on non-agenda items. It's an opportunity for the members of the public to speak to the board on non-agenda items and comments on items that are on the agenda will take place during discussion of that agenda item. Members of the public may address the board on matters within the subject matter of its jurisdiction. You may submit a speaker card still. I have some here. And upon recognition by the board, Vice President, please approach the podium, and we will take no action or discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. And speakers are limited to three minutes each. Should a member of the public have comments that pertain to a complaint against an employee of the district, the board advises that the matter should first be pursued using the appropriate district complaint procedure. So... The first three people up would be Amber Robinson, then Genevieve, Genevieve, and then Matt Davis.
So I just start? Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, hello. My name is Amber Robinson and I am a current employee at Hidden Valley Elementary School. I have been an employee for Hidden Valley for the last four years now. I started off as a noon duty and I now am a lead at our childcare facility. It came to my attention when the salary increase was put onto the agenda and it made me upset, I will say, only because within our classified staff and everything, I feel as though we are so underfunded and so underpaid. And, you know, just in the childcare alone, we only have five permanent employees and we average 120 children a day. We have to bring in subs almost every day because we don't have staff who are willing to work for the wage that is being offered. I have two current employees now that have taken us almost six months to hire, both of which received their first paycheck and have now notified me that they may not be able to continue. So we'll be down to three. This is a problem because I want to do the very best that I can for our kids and try and be there for them and give them everything that they need and they deserve. And I feel like we can't do that if we can't get the staff to come in and help and want to be there and be happy with what they have. They can't live here in this community for $12 an hour. It just doesn't work. So I mainly just came to speak because I just think that things need to be looked at and it needs to be put on the books as to, there needs to be some, you know, good negotiations and some help. So, thank you.
Thank you, Amber. We have Genevieve and Matt Davis and then... Mary Cruz. Dominguez.
Thank you to all in attendance tonight for supporting public education. I'm Genevieve Lilligrin, Santa Rosa Middle School, speaking again on the district's recent denial of permissive leaves of absence, especially to women returning from pregnancy, disability, and related leaves, or seeking accommodations for child rearing. Section 11.10.2 of the SRTA contract states, "Unpaid partial leaves of absence may be granted at the discretion of the district for up to a maximum of five years. The provision of these unpaid leaves has a great positive effect on the district's ability to attract and retain quality educators. The district has recently broken with long-held past practice and stopped granting these leaves, resulting in hardships for staff, forced resignations, loss of retirement benefits, and more. My story or any one of the anecdotes to follow in isolation may seem like personnel issues. However, the district's repetitive denial of these leaves is becoming an unofficial policy of not honoring the contract by failing to exercise discretion in good faith, as is the general rule of contract interpretation. This makes the denial of unpaid leaves of absence a policy issue worthy of the board's examination. Please consider the following testimony. One teacher says, 'I was forced to resign.' Point 2, FTE. Another, 'If I am forced to resign a percentage of my FTE, my pension will drop from $4,000 a month to about $1,800.' Another, 'I was approved two years in a row and then suddenly denied. It will be hard on our family, but resignation is too big of a risk.' Finally, an educator says, 'I have a young family, so I had no choice but to resign. It feels really irresponsible with no backup plan for my family, but I didn't feel like I had any other option.' Common legal interpretation defines forced resignation as a situation in which employers create intolerable working conditions with the specific intention of forcing employees to resign. It is considered to be a union-busting technique. Though HR maintains the position that these resignations were not forced, even a cursory examination of the testimony presented, coupled with an understanding of the definition of forced resignation, leads to the very obvious conclusion that the denial of these unpaid leaves is indeed forcing unit members to resign. All this amid an attract-and-retain crisis. It does not add up. You, Superintendent Kitamura, with the support of the board, have the power to effect immediate and meaningful change for these educators at no financial cost to the district. Please show us your foresight and compassion by considering a return to past practice in order to support teachers as we support our children, students, and the community. Thank you."
Genevieve, thank you. I'm sorry I did not pronounce your last name, Lilligrin. Mary Cruz? No, Matt.
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Kitamura and the Board of Education. My name is Matthew Davis. I'm a parent of three Santa Rosa High School students, a resident within the district, and have been the physics teacher at Santa Rosa High School for the past 21 years. I'm here to encourage you to find the resources to keep smaller AP courses and sections open next year. I understand with the new raises for teachers, the new contract language mandating smaller class sizes for ninth graders, that this is going to be more challenging than ever. It should be noted, though, that in my current AP Physics II class, there are nine ELL students enrolled. At Santa Rosa High, in the past five years, we've seen an increase in ELL and moderate-to-low-income kids enrolled in AP Science classes. Yes, it's extremely important to keep ninth-grade classes small as the district implements the new A. through G. program, but it is also important to maintain opportunities for all students, including ELL students, to take challenging AP courses as they move towards entering college. Please find the resources to ensure that the current AP course choices at the five high schools are not diminished for future students. It is interesting to note that the district has been, it looks like they've been able to find the resources to give the superintendent a 28% raise, which was, of course, just removed from the agenda, equalling $57,000 for next year. It's also understanding, my understanding that the district has found money for many other superintendents to receive a $40,000-a-year raise. Now Superintendent Kitamura and, in my experience, Dr. Anna Guzman are both wonderful people and I've had nothing but great interactions with them in my career here, and I'm sure they have served this board well and deserve a raise. But one has to admit, the optics on this are not good. Teachers got a 7% raise over two years, not 28%. We had to fight hard for it. There is talk of not allowing classes next year at the high schools if they don't have 25 students. It used to be board policy that an AP class had to have 15 students. I'm told the board has basically dissolved many of those former policies. I suggest you tap into your reserves, find the resources to keep those AP classes open so we can meet the needs of all of our students. If you can find the money for these extremely large and unprecedented administrative raises, surely you can find the money to keep small AP classes open next year. In closing on this issue, I would mention the example of my father, who was the city manager of Sebastopol from 1965 until 1993. On three occasions, he was offered a raise by the city council that far exceeded what the employees were going to get. In all three cases, he turned those raises down because he knew it to be morally wrong to accept such a raise. It would be bad for employee morale. Public officials like my father don't seem to exist anymore, which is sad. In closing, we all like to say the kids come first. Do they?
Thank you, Matt. Mary Cruz, that was, sorry, you're on the F. item. So we're going to hear from Mark Kirby, Allison Pryle, Kristen Colgrove.
Good evening, board.
Good evening, Board members. I'm Mark Kirby, president of the Maria Creo Athletic Boosters. I am first here to thank you for all the effort and support that you have given to obtain our new stadium and track last year. We would have officially thanked you sooner, but we were waiting, and are still waiting, for the project to actually be completed, now almost a year after its opening. I'm here to voice our concern and frustration regarding the lack of action, and maybe more concerning, the lack of communication from the KIA group to site administrators and us. We had explained some unfinished items to KIA last fall prior to the football season. Then in January of this year, a formal punch list of issues was forwarded to project manager Kevin Kolchak. Mr. Kolchak visited the school to confirm the items in January. This is the last we have seen or heard from him. Since January, three additional problems have arisen. The long jump pits and shot put sand pits don't drain properly and become ponds during rain. This lack of follow-through and communication from KIA should be very concerning to the Board, considering the additional projects that have been awarded throughout the district to KIA. On your handout that I gave to you, the first page is the list of punch items to be completed that was forwarded to KIA. Next is a picture of the bleacher damage, then the water intrusion to the fieldhouse, and last, a picture of an attempted track repair that obviously wasn't colored properly. I was informed this afternoon that Mr. Kolchak showed up at the school today upon learning that I would be appearing before you. I shouldn't have to come before you every two weeks just to get action from KIA. The district is paying KIA a lot of money for these projects, and perhaps more project managers are needed to effectively ensure all projects are completed satisfactorily. We still don't even know the maintenance schedule for the artificial turf, which was supposedly included in the installation contract and is coming up on its one-year anniversary. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Allison Pryle, Kristen Colgrove, and Sharon Zimmerman.
Hello, my name's Allison Pryle. I've been a resident of Santa Rosa since 2007. I'm a former Teamster. I'm currently an IHSS provider for more than 10 years. And I heard about the proposals for higher salaries for people in the Board of Education at the time when the teachers are struggling to get pay raises. And I want to say that I've seen the difficulty this town is having. Businesses are just going down one after another, and it's because the regular people don't have the funds to go in and be supportive. There should not be an upper elite in the education system. It's just wrong. This whole nation is struggling with this issue, and I would urge the Board of Education to remember that you're setting an example for your children. They're all watching. They're hoping that they're going to have lives. We can't even afford apartments, you know? I have a family member who could live with me, but I don't have an adequate space. I urge you to stand up for this county, this town, and try to turn it around. It's just time, it's time to do things in a more just way, okay? And I'm really grateful you gave me an opportunity to speak, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pryle. Kristen Colgrove, Sharon Zimmerman, Micah Goldberg.
Good evening, my name is Kristen Colgrove. I'm the office manager at Hidden Valley Elementary School. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Over the past year, a word that has been utilized regularly within our district is equity. How can we create more equitable opportunities for all students? Our leadership strives for equity and access for all, something I'm proud to be a part of. However, equity is not prevailing when it comes to wages for our district employees. Tonight, you will vote to ratify an agreement with SRTA for our teachers to receive a raise of 3% for the 1920 school year and 4% for the following year. Under the Me Too clause, the classified staff and the cabinet members will receive the same raises. This is where things go awry for me. The cabinet, according to tonight's original agenda, was asking for an additional 3.5% raise per year and a one-time bump of an average of 25% per member. This totals over 150,000 per year for the five members. This is an exponential pay raise for the top 1% of our organization. I feel strongly that classified wages need to be looked at and restructured. By not paying a living wage to your classified staff, you lose good people and, in the long term, lose money because of the high rate of staff turnover. While I am grateful this item has been tabled for this evening, I feel I still must let you know that I had intended to implore you to vote no to the extreme salary increase being proposed by the cabinet. A yes vote would have been a vote for inequity. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Kitamura and members of the Santa Rosa City School Board. My name is Sharon Zimmerman, and I'm the parent of a son who is a junior at Santa Rosa High. I am speaking to express support for a full set of AP courses at the Santa Rosa High Schools remaining at the current levels for the 2019-2020 school year. I have followed with interest the articles in the Press Democrat about the recent change requiring all high school students in the Santa Rosa City Schools to graduate meeting the A-to-G requirements. While this is clearly a noble goal, I'm concerned when I hear that the response of school administrators to achieve this is to reduce advanced placement courses for their most advanced students. Reducing AP courses serves to focus education to an average level, and my specific concern is that Santa Rosa High School is considering eliminating the AP Physics II course next year. My son, a junior, is currently taking a full load of advanced placement courses, including AP Physics I, Honors Trig Precálculus, and AP History. These courses are key to him being competitive with other high school students across the state in college admissions. He came home recently and said, told me that Santa Rosa High was considering eliminating the AP Physics II course next year that he was planning to teach, to take. My husband and I both have undergraduate degrees in engineering and understand how valuable having two years of high school physics is at the advanced placement level for success in an engineering program in college. And it is stunning to me to think that the largest high school in Sonoma County can't support an AP Physics II course. At a time when there is a terrific need for STEM graduates, it's vital that our public high schools provide advanced placement courses in the math and sciences for our advanced students. All our students deserve to be taught to their level in public high schools, including advanced students. I then was shocked to read today's agenda that the school board was considering voting on giving the school superintendent a raise of 27% and the top deputies raises of 22%. A partial justification for these raises is that you have one less administrator and have allocated that salary to existing staff. Does this mean that you will reduce your salaries by this amount when you inevitably hire an additional administrator? To vote for these 27% and 22% raises when you are reluctantly giving teacher raises of only 7% over two years and reducing AP courses is patently unfair, wrong, and indefensible. I request that you maintain AP classes and specifically keep AP Physics II at Santa Rosa High for next year. And please, lead by example and limit administration wage increases to the same level you are providing teachers and staff, 7% over the next two years. Our students deserve a full diversity of courses, including AP Physics and other advanced placement courses, and frankly, administrators who do not enrich themselves at the expense of teachers and students. I suggest applying some of the administrators' excessive raises to keeping the AP classes.
Thank you, Ms. Zimmerman. It's Michael, Carlin Goldberg, and Margaret Boone.
Good evening, my name is Micah Carlin Goldberg. I teach sixth grade at Steel Lane Elementary. I'm here to address the income inequality in our district. I was going to talk about this a little later, but my school spent 18 months without an office manager, partly because we had somebody on leave, but then once she was no longer our on-leaves office manager, it took us nine months to hire a new one. That's nine months with the principal doing two jobs, his and the office manager. So I'm not sure if you guys realize quite how much an office manager does at elementary school. They're our registrar. They are our main contact point with our families. They do all of our registrations. They make sure that we get all of our supplies ordered because they do all of our ordering, all of these jobs. And a first-year office manager who's coming into our district makes $16.22 an hour. By comparison, the $151,000 that you were planning to offer to the top five paid employees in our district would be enough for $10,059 hours at $15 an hour. Imagine what we would do if that $151,000 spread to our classified employees who are not making a living wage in our district. Our noon-duty supervisors at elementary school, they start at $12.10 an hour. We have multiple elementary sites where the teachers are giving up their duty-free, contractually obligated lunch to supervise the students for safety because they cannot hire enough noon-duty supervisors. In August, SRTA passed a resolution encouraging and supporting a $15 minimum for all employees in our district and a living wage as soon as possible after that $15 was reached. Choose better priorities with our money. We don't have enough of it as it is. We need better priorities. We need to support our CSEA brethren. We need to pay them a living wage so that we can have the people who support our students face-to-face every day being able to live in our county. Also, there's also inequity between the elementary and the senior level. My elementary office manager does the counseling secretary's job, the registrar's job, and the office manager's job, and she makes less than any of those individual positions, of which there are multiple people, at the middle and high school level. In your next choice of how to classify employees in our district, I strongly suggest that you look at the inequality between what you're paying your elementary classified staff and your senior classified staff and fix it. Make our students the priority for our money. Thank you.
Margaret Boone.
I wanted to talk about our failure to attract and retain assistants. I teach in the special-day class for students with severe disabilities at Montgomery, usually referred to as the medically fragile class. I've been the teacher in that room for seven years. In those seven years, I've had open positions for five years, usually one open position, but sometimes two. Next door to me are two more SDC classes for severely handicapped students. One of those classes has one position filled by a sub, the other class has two. The first class has had the position open for three years. At Slater Middle School, they have two SH classes. One is fully staffed, the other has three open positions since December. Over at Elsie Allen, they have two SH classes and are short one assistant as well. Cook is fully staffed, as is Santa Rosa, but out of a total of five sites, we are short seven aides. Positions that have been filled by subs who cost more aren't permanent, and that means using subs for assistance, keeping the subs out of classrooms during an ongoing sub shortage. Last year, all the SH teachers were given flyers to pass out to family and friends to try to recruit assistants, but we still have all these openings. The reason is our aides can't live on what they make. Both of my assistants work second jobs. One drives Uber after work, the other does in-home care four overnights a week. Next door, one of their assistants works two jobs as well. My assistants live in low-income housing and get insurance through Covered California. There's just no way we can expect people to live on the wages we are offering our assistants, and SH assistants are some of the highest-paid assistants in the district. Of course, I'm talking about SH assistants because that's the world I live in, but this problem is district-wide, across all disciplines. As a district, we have to ask ourselves, what would motivate people to apply for these jobs when baggers at Whole Foods make $15 an hour and fast-food restaurants are starting at 11 or 12, the same as our childcare workers or yard duties? We'll never fill these positions if we continue to pay our classified staff. We need to make living wages at least $15 an hour for our classified staff a priority. Thank you.
At this time, we will have the California CSEA report.
Good evening, Tammy Afonso, President, CSEA, Chapter 75. Vice President Fong, Superintendent Kitamura, Board Members, and Student Board Member. Tonight, what I'm discussing is a situation I believe has been caused by the state of California and ourselves as public voters. The reason we are in this situation in funding for education is at the state level. We need to rally together, go to the state, pick it, do what we can, all of it. Several months ago, I gave the school board members at the time copies of our Classified Compensation Survey. In that survey, it showed that the classified employees of Santa Rosa City Schools are paid at 25% or less of the state of California. We, as a district, need to work together to move this forward towards the 50th percentile and above. The classified employees of Santa Rosa City Schools deserve a living wage and health and welfare benefits. It has been stated many, many times, the goal of the district is to truly attract and retain qualified employees in all areas. The dedicated classified staff deserve parity, and I believe we can do this. We need to work together to educate the public statewide that public education and our children deserve to be fully funded. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. We have the SRTA report, Santa Rosa Teachers Association report, President Will Lyon.
Good evening, members of the school board and Dr. Kitamura. First, I would like to welcome Allegra De La Cruz to the board. I haven't met you yet. I hope we remedy that soon over coffee or some other way, but I want to recognize that you've picked up a heavy, heavy rock, and the work that you're doing affects over 16,000 students, thousands of employees, and our entire city, and we have every confidence that you'll be excellent. Thank you for stepping up. I want to mention that we are aware that President Close has an ill family member, and whatever the political tit-for-tacs that go back and forth are, those are totally separate, and our thoughts and our prayers are with President Close and her family. I think we already passed the TA and the E items, but just in case I missed that, and they'll be passed later, I'll encourage you to vote yes on that if it comes up. In any case, I am looking forward to be able to call that our collective bargaining agreement instead of our tentative agreement. The agreement that was reached by the district and the union is a win-win-win. It's good for students, it's good for teachers, and it's good for our district, and it's the right thing to do, and we're going to need to do that several more times in order to right the ship and to make this a district that can attract and retain the best educators. Lastly, I want to thank the community for standing up and speaking out against income inequality, and I want to thank the school board for listening to the staff and the community in tabling admin raises and new drive community and tabling admin raises and new job descriptions until a later date. I think I heard you say that'll be on the next school board meeting on May 8. I encourage members to continue to speak out for income inequality, and I would urge us all to work together to make Santa Rosa a destination district equitably for all students and for all staff, and the number-one priority for that right now should be getting a $15 minimum wage for all of our employees. I actually think that's pretty low-hanging fruit. I think that will do very little to solve the problem, but if we don't do that, we're making a grave mistake. It should be remedied immediately, and we should work towards, from there on out, we should work towards raising all boats in an equitable way so that everybody is played closer and closer until we achieve a pay scale that works for everybody and that works for our district and for our town and our students. Thank you.
Thank you, President Lyon, and yes, we will get to approving that tentative agreement soon. Do we have a Labor and Management Collaborative Report?
Good evening, Vice President Fong. There's no report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane, Board President, report. Oh, it's my board report. Diane, do you have a report? No.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here tonight. I would like to start out by congratulating some very well-deserving CSEA employees. This last week, I was fortunate enough to get to attend the Classified School Employee of the Year reception at SCO, and Santa Rosa City School actually dominated the House. We had seven nominees for Classified School Employee of the Year. We had Ben Gonzalez from Ridgeway High School, representing M&amp;O, and Nethercutt, also from Ridgeway High School, representing paraeducators. Dee Ridgway, Ridgeway High School, representing Office and Technical. Tim Gilligan, representing Ridgeway High School for Support, Service, and Security. Renee Jackson from the District Office, under Office and Technical. And Linda Zavala for District Office, Office and Technical. Now, here's the great news. Two of these people are going on to the state level. And I'm so proud to announce that Tim Gilligan and Linda Zavala are going on to the state The other thing I'd like to commend and acknowledge is the teaching and learning and safe staff around Professional Development Day on April 11. They worked tirelessly with teachers and staff, teaching other teachers. I had this dream, and it has come to fruition, that we would not have as many people from the outside teaching, that we would have people from the inside, and we are almost 100% there. We still have a few things that we're having other people do, but there were 73 offerings on that day, and what I'm really pleased to see is that we bumped up that attendance from our certificated staff to about 80%. So I think that's something very commendable. In addition, we also had classified staff offerings, and I just want to just name a few things. For classified staff, we had Gender 2019, Going Beyond Male and Female Roles. I love that. Mastering Gmail. So those are just some ideas about the classified staff offerings. So our BOP crew, led by Casey and Ruth Moore, I Wish I'd Been There, Student Engagement, Historical Inquiry, and the research paper in an A- through G classroom. Wow, it's just such good stuff. Arts Integration, Critical Reading, Writing Skills Through Academic Conversations, Cross-Cutting Concepts in Science and Expository Text, Stephen Anna Williams, and let's see, let me just name a few because they're so good. We had work, teaching around Newsliya. That's a new tool that we're using specifically to help reading levels and A- through G support. We had secondary math curriculum planning, and the department chairs were big in leading those, and so we're thankful for that to them. So again, I mean, this list is available in teaching and learning. Maybe we could put it up so that we can showcase the number of staff that taught in these days and how we are truly working together with colleagues to provide some of the best professional development around. I have a few districts asking if they can attend our professional development, so thank you all very much.
Thank you, Superintendent Kitamura. Now, it's the Board President report, and maybe I'll just take that time. I want to give a shout-out to adaptive PE teacher Benny Coma. I was really lucky to get to work with Benny when he was at Montgomery, and he's really been in our district for a while at many schools also. He actually, at Hidden Valley, last week arranged an entire Special Olympics, kind of mini-Special Olympics for the kids, using student athletes, so they were learning, reg-ed kids, learning, helping with all the other students, and it was an amazing thing with many little obstacles and things. It looked like a little mini-Olympics, very cool. And I heard he also did it at Steel Lane, and I think this is something that Benny does, and he does it at the high schools, and he also does it area-wide, apparently. So Benny, appreciation to you, true asset for the district. Also, the Barclay, the choirs of Piner, Elsie, Magario, Carrillo, Montgomery, and Santa Rosa High Schools are the best choirs in the world. They had their annual Barclay, William Barclay Memorial Choral Scholarship last night at the Green Center, and I want to appreciate the choral directors. I'm going to name them. Michael Milbrath, Kyle Thompson, Gail Bowers, Dana Alexander, and Kira Bombachi. They have an average of 22.5 years of teaching experience, from 14 years to 33 years each. We have very experienced choir teachers, so the choral students in our schools are benefiting greatly from their expertise and their experience. I think it's truly a world-class education in choral music, so appreciation to all of that in the arts and music. And also, I appreciate personally the math departments at Carrillo and Santa Rosa High School for their generous time spending with me, helping me to gain an important picture of ninth-grade Math 1. That's it for now.
Oops, Dr. Fong. We have some very anxious students out there, I think, who want to give it up for their choral teachers. Is that what I saw? Okay, let's do it. One try.
And I know we do this for instrumental music also and for dance as well, so also thank you. Thank you. Coordinator. Other board reports. Director Medina.
I actually just wanted to take a moment to, first off, mention that, for many people don't know, I have epilepsy, and last week, I had an epileptic seizure, and I wanted to thank everybody that reached out to see if I was okay. But I decided to bring it up right now because when I was first diagnosed with it as a child, you know, knowing that other people had epilepsy, like, actually made me feel less alone. And so when I would have a teacher reach out to me or mention to me that they also had epilepsy, I felt like, okay, I'm not alone. I'm not the only person that deals with this. So I wanted to share that I have epilepsy, and, you know, last Friday, I had a seizure for the first time in five years. It had been a long time, but it's something that's oftentimes real difficult to deal with. You don't lose consciousness, you know, and you're out, and it's scary for people to watch. So I want to say thank you to all those that reached out to me and let people know that there's people out there like me that have it, and we could still lead normal lives.
No report tonight. Thank you.
Earlier this month, I attended the Piner High School Athletic Hall of Fame Induction Dinner and Ceremony, and I had the honor of inducting two of my former athletes, including Ryan Lathrum, who was a champion and record-setting swimmer. He graduated from Piner in 1995, and he went on to get his degree on a full swimming scholarship at UNLV, so it was fantastic to see his family and see him, and it had been a long time, so that was awesome. And then, as well, we inducted Jamie Westaby, who was a 1999 graduate from Piner and an exceptional diver, and sadly, Jamie died in a car accident in 2003, just after graduating. As a student athlete from Cal, she was a brilliant student. She was a former student of mine, English student of mine at Piner, and she was a superstar student at Cal, and she was a diver for them as well, and she was one of the best and brightest I've ever been able to work with in my career, and so it was just wonderful to honor her in that way and induct her into the Hall of Fame and to award that to her family and her parents. So it was a fantastic night, a sentimental night, and I was honored to have been asked to participate in that. So, that's it.
Director De La Cruz.
I just have a couple of thank-yous to the new Laurys in my life, so Lori Kulachek and Lori Fong. I want to thank you for your time and energy in helping this transition be a little bit easier, and thanks also to Will. I look forward to meeting with you. I actually met you back in the day when A- through G was up and about and had a nice, lively conversation with you, so I look forward to reconnecting. And thanks to all the folks in the community who have started to reach out. It is really, truly, an honor to listen and to hear all of your concerns and to figure out how best to move forward, taking them all into consideration in the best way I can, so thank you.
Director Mackin.
No report tonight.
Except she was at the Barclay last night, too, singing. Very good.
We had a great time. We had some singers out here, too.
Would you raise your hand if you were in the choral as well?
Oh, no, did they leave? Uh-oh, she left. Sorry. Good work, Peyton.
All right, did I miss anybody? We do not have a CSBA report, I believe.
I attended, I'm on the Superintendent's Council for CSBA, the California School Boards Association. There are, I'm in my second term. They don't normally do a second term, but, I don't know, they couldn't get rid of me. So I am on my second term. The main thing that we talked about was really around what the governor's budget will look like in the May revise, and so we're, next month, as we get closer to that, we will be sure to report out what we find out about what he may be doing. You know, one of his major focus is on early childhood education, so let's see if he stands by that and what money he produces for us to be able to do anything about that. So that's all I have to report for CSBA.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Director McCormick is now, Director McCormick, would you like to announce what your position is at CSBA? I don't remember what it was, but it's, I know it has something to do with, yes.
Oh, okay. I was like, which position are we talking about? So I'm on the Board of Managers for CIF and CS Athletics, and I'm not exactly sure what that entails yet, but I'm very interested to find out. We have three meetings a year, and I'm getting more information. I just got my formal appointment letter, and I'm a big supporter of student athletics and have been involved with NCS and CIF in the past, so I'm excited to serve in a different way in that position.
Congratulations. All right, now, I think we're to the E consent items, which I botched earlier, so let's be clear. We're going to be approving, I need a motion to approve items, consent items, E1 through E7 and 8, skipping 9 and 10, and approving 11.
Move to approve items, E1 through E8 and E11.
I will second.
So we have a motion by Director Medina and second by Director Sheffield. Call for the vote. Director Medina.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Fong.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
And Director Mackin.
Aye.
All right, consent items are passed. That is a big deal. Because hidden in there, and I'm going to read it out loud because we're so happy about this, and President Lyon referred to this, approval of two-year tentative agreement, approval of the two-year agreement between Santa Rosa City Schools and Santa Rosa Teachers We are moving on to discussion action items, and our first one is F1, which is a resolution recognizing Teacher Appreciation Week, which is May 6 through 10.
I'm very pleased to bring this resolution forward to the board for approval. As I was thinking about this item and thinking about teachers, what always comes to mind for me is Mrs. Ziegemeyer. Mrs. Ziegemeyer was my sixth-grade teacher, and in sixth grade, she was shorter than me, and I'm pretty short, so she was very short. But why she was special to me, a special teacher to me, was that she gave me a project to do in sixth grade, not what all the other kids were doing. She's challenged me to look for every book on women's, women, strong women in any kind of field, Amelia Earhart's and all that, just any woman, and develop a unit of study for the other sixth-grade students around those books about strong women in leadership. I will tell you, she probably is one of the, besides my mother, was probably one of the most important people to help me get on the road to activism, you know, and the isms cross many areas, but when I talk about Mrs. Ziegemeyer, it really is that special and unique bond that your students have with you as teachers, and it is for a lifetime. I could name many other teachers that I have this connection to because they affected my life in such a positive way. So with that, I want to acknowledge, thank, appreciate the teachers of Santa Rosa City Schools, and there will be surprises at your site, a little surprise that we've got cooked up, but truly, truly do thank you for everything that you do.
As this is an action item, I'm going to need a motion to move this resolution forward.
I'd like to move to adopt Resolution Number 2018/19-052, recognizing May 6 through 10 of 2019 as Teacher Appreciation Week.
I second. We have a motion offered by Trustee Medina and seconded by Trustee De La Cruz. Let's have a vote. Director Medina.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Fong.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director Mackin. The resolution passes. Teacher Appreciation Week will be May 6, 10 in the Santa Rosa City School District. The next item is F2. It's the resolution recognizing Substitute Teachers Appreciation Week.
Thank you. I'm going to turn this over to Assistant Superintendent Spector, who will be presenting this resolution.
Thank you, Superintendent Kitamura. Similar to the story about the power of teachers, I think we'd also want to talk about the power of a visiting teacher. Imagine walking into a house and being expected to know what's in the fridge, who sleeps where, who gets dressed for what, when you've never been there and you don't know the family, in a way that's sort of the role of a visiting teacher. In a way, that's sort of the role of a visiting teacher. You're asked and expected to come into a school and know the culture, understand the relationships, be able to teach the content, but more importantly, establish relationships with students so that they continue to learn while their regular teacher might not be with them for that day or days. And so with this resolution, we want to celebrate and recognize our visiting teachers in Santa Rosa City Schools. And one of the ways in which we do that, when we have been talking this evening about equity and ensuring that we're representing wage that supports our staff, our visiting teachers this year have had an increase in what they can earn to almost $180 a day in some of our high-needs areas, such as mathematics and special education. And our long-term visiting teachers can earn over $200 a day for staying with us, so that there's continuity in the relationships and the work that they do. So for all of that and more, we want to honor and recognize them with this resolution this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. So it's an action item, resolution recognizing visiting, well, Substitute Teacher Appreciation Week, visiting teacher.
Move to adopt Resolution Number 2018/19-053, recognizing May 6th through 10th, 2019, as Substitute Teacher Appreciation Week.
Second.
So the motion's been moved by Trustee Medina and seconded by Trustee Sheffield. Director Medina?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director De La Cruz?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director McCormick?
Aye.
Director Mackin?
Aye.
We honor substitute teachers, the week of May 6th through 10th, but every day. F3 item is the resolution recognizing National School Nurses. It is National School Nurse Day, May 8th.
Thank you. I will turn this over to Assistant Superintendent Mazzara, who oversees the nurses.
Thank you, Vice President Fong, Board Members, Superintendent Kiddermura. May 8th, it will be recognized as School Nurse Appreciation Day, and on that day, we want to take a moment to understand and recognize the important things that our school nurses do. The boxes that they check legally are around mandatory screenings, special ed health reviews, reviewing health plans, but they do so much more than that. They train our staff. They work with our health techs to understand their positions. They train them on the correct protocol for medicine distributions. They work with our school staff. I've seen them do presentations for AEDs to certificated staff meetings. They train noon duties at their schools for students that may have illnesses and how to be aware of them. They do so much more, and what is often overlooked is the education piece. As we move forward in our world of equity, they have become strong proponents in the trauma-informed practices. They take huge parts in our project sale that are on the SAR boards. And lastly, they are becoming an integral part of our MTSS system. So with that, we'd like the Board to take action and celebrate with us our school nurses, and they are Nico Ateb, Cheryl Klauser, Jennifer Rodriguez, Sangmo Weitzman, Jennifer Heinley, and Laura Hudgens. And Board, we ask that you approve for May 8th as School Nurse Recognition Day.
I'd like to comment that that was six nurses in our district, and of course, the ironic sad thing is that California is very low in nurses per student in the state of California. So we really appreciate our nurses. Yes.
We do. And we appreciate Board for Action earlier, which will increase salaries for our specialists, including school nurses, which will give them the value and the worth that they've deserved, and hopefully you fill the other three positions that we have.
It's an action item, Board.
With that, I move the approval of Resolution 2018/1954, recognizing National School Nurses Day, May 8th.
Second.
So the motion was made by Director Sheffield and seconded by Director Medina. Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director Medina?
Aye.
Director De La Cruz?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director McCormick?
Aye.
Director Mackin?
Aye.
Thank you. May 8th will be National School Nurse Day. We are now on F4, and we have Ethnic Studies update.
No, after the presentation.
So we're turning it over to staff for presentation on Ethnic Studies.
Good evening, Vice President Fong, Superintendent Kiddermura, members of the Board. Tonight, you will receive an update where we are with Ethnic Studies. It's a sort of a follow-up presentation from the November 14th, 2019 meeting. You also hear a little bit about the infusion of the culturally responsive teaching and learning that's also being added to this discussion. With that, I turn it over to Coordinator Evans, who's really been leading the charge here with his groups and our equity work within the district. So with that, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Guzman. And also, I'd like to say that I have Principal Gabe Albevera with me, and he has been on the Ethnic Studies Exploration Committee since the beginning, since it first started. So we're going to present some information to you tonight, an update on where we are. Thank you. So I'd like to review some key points from our previous presentation, the one that we did in November. One of the most important of those points is the "why." This quote that's on the screen is from Dr. Christine Sleeder, Professor Emerita from Cal State Monterey Bay, and it demonstrates the reason we're exploring Ethnic Studies. She writes, "As students of color proceed through the school system, research finds that the overwhelming dominance of Euro-American perspectives leads many students to disengage from academic learning. Ethnic Studies curricula exist in part because students of color have demanded an education that is relevant, meaningful, and affirming of their identities." So relevant, meaningful, and affirming of their identities is the kind of education we all want, and it really hasn't been the case for all of our students. This slide provides a snapshot of the last five years of work and how the efforts of Santa Rosa City Schools mirror the work of the state of California. The equity initiative, our equity initiative, began in 2014 during the same year the LCAP was implemented. Also in that year, the El Rancho School District became the first district in California to make Ethnic Studies a graduation requirement. In 2015, community members and Santa Rosa City School staff began to discuss Ethnic Studies, and in 2016, at the end of that school year, we developed our Ethnic Studies Exploration Committee with a small group of people, teachers, mostly teachers. We had one staff member from the JC, but it was mostly teachers and administrators. Then in 2016, the state introduced legislation. It was Assembly Bill 2016 that led to the creation of a committee to create a model curriculum for Ethnic Studies. Then in 2017, Assembly Bill 2772 was introduced, and that bill would have made Ethnic Studies a graduation requirement across the state. The bill was vetoed in September of 2018. So that's on hold for now, but the committee that developed Assembly Bill 2016 is moving that model curriculum work forward. So this whole spring, they've been developing model curriculum, and we hope to see that later in the summer. So looking at the activities of this school year, 1819, as we said, in November, we did our board report. The Ethnic Studies Exploration Committee continued to meet. We added some members to our committee, such as Stephanie Graham, who's in the audience, and also Rebecca Talk. We have some other members of higher ed, other teachers, and a teacher from West County who's also joined our group. Excuse me. This spring, we have held three community forums for, one was for adults, the second was for students, and the third brought both the students and the adults together. A follow-up to those forums is an Ethnic Studies Mini-Institute that we're going to do next Wednesday, May 1st, from 3:30 to 8:00 p.m. It's going to be at the Lewis Education Center, and I would love it if you all could come, if you could come for a little while or for the whole thing. It's going to be very interesting, and we'd love to see you there. Thank you. So getting back to the forums, the key points from the adults were that, generally speaking, across the board, there was a very strong interest in culturally relevant, culturally responsive teaching and learning. For many, Ethnic Studies is not enough. Some people really wanted to see that culturally responsive kind of education spread K-12, to really integrate it into the curriculum. But the usual questions came up, such as, you know, what would it look like? Would it be an A through G class? How would we implement it in the different grade levels? Who would teach it? What would the professional development be? Those are always the same questions that come up, and if we move forward, we're going to have to answer those questions. The key points from the students were pretty straightforward. There was a very strong interest in an education that has relevance to their lives. Many of the students that we talked to did not feel like their perspective matters. Students want to be heard, and they want to be engaged. They really want to be part of their community and become citizens, but I think there's a way that they feel like school's really not about them. Students want culturally responsive education, and they want Ethnic Studies as well. They want both. So they want to see the infusion, the integration, and they also want to see standalone Ethnic Studies courses. So our next steps for 1920, in August, Curtis Acosta, Dr. Acosta, will come to be our welcome-back teacher to our student, our student, our teacher gathering in August. And then throughout the year, he will lead some professional development with a group of teachers to learn how to develop the culturally responsive, sustaining, and humanizing education. And what that means is, we're talking about an education that is culturally relevant, meaning it's, there's cultural wealth. We appreciate and understand and acknowledge the cultural wealth that the students bring. We see those students as assets, and that is a key piece of what we need to do with our students, is to really see what they bring to our classrooms. We also need to be responsive to their culture, and we need to align our curriculum to the academic outcomes. So it's not just about, you know, seeing the kids and saying, oh, I understand who you are and bringing that perspective, but we have to align all those things to the academic So the next steps for implementation are to continue the culturally responsive, sustaining, and humanizing professional development, to develop some Ethnic Studies units through the model that was developed by CCD, K-12, and work with those teachers, develop board policy for Ethnic Studies and culturally responsive education, and then, hopefully, we can pilot an Ethnic Studies class in the year 2122. So with that, we turn it over to the Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. We have two comment cards on this topic, and we'll start with Mary Cruz Rios Dominguez, and then we have Sophia Bartolata.
So hello, my name is Pari Cruz Rios, and I just want to say thank you for having me here. I am a senior at Rosa University Prep, and have passed both regular and AP US history, yet I can't say I know the history of my ancestors. I'm naive to my own people and culture. Ethnic Studies gives the opportunity to learn about race, ethnicity, and culture. Actually, Stanford studies by Brooke Donalds found that Ethnic Studies benefits are suggested, sorry. So Ethnic Studies suggest that high school, sorry, can I start over? All right. All right, so Stanford studies by Brooke Donalds found academic benefits of Ethnic Studies. The Stanford Graduate Schools of Education suggest high school Ethnic Studies define race, identity, and culture, which has improved attendance and increased the number of courses, credits, students need to graduate. Also, I've known a lot of my friends who wish they had Ethnic Studies in their high school to open doors of their own interests. And so in conclusions, this is important, to learn about one heritage and understand our history, because comprehending our history will motivate students and myself to learn about their forgotten piece. Thank you.
Ready? All right. Hello, my name is Sophia Bartolata, and I am a junior at Almolino. Even though I am not a current member of this school district, I believe my opinion as an Ethnic Studies student at my own school can provide the Santa Rosa City School Board with insight. I've thoroughly enjoyed my time as an Ethnic Studies student, but my favorite project has been the LGBTQ History textbook my friends and I created over the last month. I was originally inspired to complete the project after I learned about the Fair Education Act, an act that requires the inclusion of disabled and LGBTQ individuals into California state history curriculum. So upon learning about this, I went to my vice principal, and I asked her about these standards and their implications in our own school, but unfortunately, she could not tell me because she'd never heard about the Fair Education Act. I ended up calling Rick Aculto, the education director at Our Family Coalition, the organization that originally created the act. He was able to tell me that not only were compliant textbooks still not on the shelves of any high school in California due to poor education funding, his organization had also never received a single complaint of incoherence in eight years. Honestly, I was appalled. To think that a group of people could identify a problem, a substantial one at that, create an act, and then never receive any compliance undermines the entire system of educational law, and my Ethnic Studies group agreed. So we created an LGBTQ History book. Our book is 12 pages long. It includes a glossary, 10 biographies of historical LGBTQ heroes, a timeline, and a timeline of events. We also include a section devoted to teaching what intersectionality is, which, if you don't know what that is, it basically is a social concept regarding the influence of multiple oppressions onto minority individuals, and I imagine was a grounding foundation for the original Ethnic Studies curriculum. Due to AP testing and graduation stress, our book is on hold right now, waiting to be fully printed and distributed at the community level, but we have plans to reach out to California publishing companies so our work could legally be considered supplemental material. Without this project, I wouldn't have really thought that there was a way for me to change others' opinions and perceptions, and that notion has been echoed by the rest of my class as well. In the past month, I've seen presentations on machismo in Latino communities, relationship violence, the Riot Girl movement in the 1990s, and gang rape in Bangladesh. This wide variety of subjects may seem random, but they all have one thing in common. They all teach something I've never learned in a history class. Sometimes, cultural progression feels slow. Whether it's regarding race, gender, or sexuality, real societal progress can feel distant, but my experience as an Ethnic Studies student has taught me that educating others about things that may feel uncomfortable or unfamiliar to them in their own lives is how you create real change in your community. I truly believe that the benefits of Ethnic Studies class can offer the community far outweigh the potential costs. For a class like this has the ability to affect the future of our culture.
So we generally don't comment on public comments, but Mary Cruz and Sophia, number one, you aren't even in this district, and you came all the way to come speak to us, so thank you. You believe in it, and we are believing in it, too. You are leaders, and you are brave, you're activists, you're learners, and we'd love a copy of that history book.
Yeah. Yeah, 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 for sure.
Thank you again. So it is open to Board discussion questions.
I was just wondering, do we have an idea of what the pilot will look like? Is it at one school? Is it one class? Or is it across the board? Is it high, middle, elementary? What does the pilot look like? Or is that too far ahead?
Well, you know, it's a pretty complicated piece. Our work with Curtis Acosta and Dr. Sleeder, who, the quote was from Dr. Sleeder, they're both going to be there at the Mini-Institute next week. Great opportunity to meet some amazing educators. We'll have a better idea of how this, what this can look like. Dr. Acosta has been working with school districts all over the country in helping them develop their approach to either Ethnic Studies or culturally responsive education. I personally, and in my conversations with them, I feel like we need to do both at once. We need to look at the integration piece and also have an Ethnic Studies standalone class. class as well. And I don't know what that would look like exactly. There are lots of different ways that it can look. Previously, ethnic studies was like, oh, let's look at, you know, Asian studies and Chicanos studies and, you know, African-American studies and et cetera. There would be different elements, but there are lots of different lenses that people are bringing to it now. So I think we could get real creative about what it looks like.
I would, a part of that is that we need to involve our teachers. And so we don't want to prescribe what it's going to look like yet until we bring our teachers together and this dialogue and conversation happens and the training by Dr. Acosta and
Don't know who's first, so Director Sheffield.
Thank you for the update. I just wanted to comment, say that with the addition of new school board members, I think that our governing board here is, in regards to racial, ethnic, and just overall diversity is pretty amazing. I think if you look at the Sonoma County and you look at the North Bay, I don't know if there is a governing body that is as diverse as this board. Just look at us.
Yeah.
And I'm pretty proud of this. And this being said, the makeup of the educators on our school sites is not the same, and that's okay. Something to work on. But I think because of this, it's even more so important, in my opinion, that we move forward with maybe celebrating and respecting the cultural wealth, Elizabeth, that you talked about. I really liked that term, the cultural wealth, and I was taking some notes through the presentation. And then lastly, I just want to say that we all stand to benefit from an understanding of who we are and where we come from. And I look forward to moving forward with the pilot project on this. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Director Medina.
Yeah, so my first question is, in regards to the committee that currently exists, I'm curious as to how many of the committee members, if any, were ethnic studies majors?
Yeah, go ahead.
I did get my degree in what was called Mexican-American studies at the time, but with that, we did take courses in different, as you know, different African-American studies, Asian studies. Aside from the other committee members, I don't know who else was a major.
So Rebecca Talk, who is a part of the committee, just said that, because it's got to be on tape, was a cultural anthropology major because there wasn't ethnic studies or that major at the time. Not that you're aged or anything, but.
So I think in terms of like, kind of what I'm hearing, I definitely agree that, you know, there has to be both routes. I think part of the very foundation of the problem is the fact that, you know, traditional textbooks exclude a lot of stuff, which is part of the foundation of the problem. But I think in terms of where we head, we have to have a lot of options in terms of very specific courses, whether it be, you know, Chicanos, African-American, APIA studies, whatever. But I'm curious if you're also looking at integration with existing courses, like an English class that meets our current English standards, but also has thematic in whether it be, you know, a specific culture.
Yes, we are. In fact, we have talked to some English teachers, to some social studies teachers. There were our social studies teachers and a retired social studies teacher on the committee, and we've talked about where it would fit into existing curriculum. Would it be something that would work with a humanities class? Would it be best in an English class and bring in different kinds of texts and reading materials? So we're looking at all the different possible options.
And I'm also wondering if, in that, we're also looking at our, what we have in terms of our offerings, like within our libraries, what books and stuff we have for students to check out for literature and stuff that teachers could use for students to check out.
Absolutely.
And I'm curious, as it relates to AB 2772, I was really frustrated when Governor Brown vetoed that, but I do recognize there's a lot of opposition to that, but the legislature did pass it. So me personally, I'm optimistic that it'll pass again. I don't know where Governor Newsom's at with that. But are you all also looking into what that might look like or preparing for the possibility of that in your preparation?
Well, what we're really doing is wait, and we've been looking at a lot of different points of view, and we would like to get some direction from the board about our next step so that we know how far we can really go with what we're doing.
Well, I'll add my two cents that, you know, I feel that we should go the route of AB 2772, but somehow incorporate it within existing courses. We're kind of like, you know, a lot of the colleges now, you know, have an ethnic studies requirement as part of their graduation requirements, but it is something that could be double counted within other courses. So I think for me personally, that's kind of the route that I'd like to go, you know, with, and I hope that that could be part of like what you all look into. But definitely, to me, from, you know, the point that I started was in ninth grade with ethnic studies, and I think that really changed the person that I became, and it's really important that we incorporate it effectively in a way that really impacts the lives of our youth. I feel a lot of the issues that we have in our society revolve around ignorance and cultural ignorance, and that I think that with ethnic studies, we're able to do a lot towards helping break down barriers that exist. And so to me, this is really important.
If I could add something, I think also in regards to our teachers, we have a lot of teachers that obviously are interested in this, but I think the same way that we are going out to look for science teachers and math teachers, now we really start, should start focusing on those teachers that have that ethnic studies background, to bring that in because it is a little bit, and I had a discussion with one of my teachers about this specific topic, and, you know, my teacher said, well, you know, we could talk about the history of Mexico, we could talk about the history. And he was missing what I was trying to say is that it's not about the history of Mexico, it's about the people that are here now, whether we talk about, you know, African-American philosophy, Chicano philosophy, literature, all of those encompassing. So I think there's still a misconception about what ethnic studies is because it's not just about history, it's about the people and the people in the United States and how, you know, we are, like you said, how we can relate to each other. And the same way that the young lady just eloquently expressed, you know, what she's learned from the different things that she's been taught is exactly what we see with our students, learning about the different perspectives and being able to have critical, important dialogue within the classroom. At one of the last meetings that we had, we had a senior student, I don't remember what high school he was at, it might have been Santa Rosa High, who said that they had a discussion just for the first time in four years of high school. He said, I could honestly say it was the best discussion I've ever had because they were talking about, you know, what was going on in the world today. And he was a senior, and he said that he saw what this type of a course could, courses, depending on how you look at it, and how it could impact students, especially at a minority age. And they were saying, it can't be just high school, we got to look K-12.
And the other thing that I, that I'm not sure, that's within the scope of what y'all are doing, but I think is really important, kind of addressing what you brought up, is in terms of filling the needs or staffing in the future, like where we are in terms of like local partnerships and also pathways. Like I know the JC's done a lot more in terms of developing their ethnic studies course availability, but simultaneously, I feel that Sonoma State's just gone downhill. And I think in terms of like better preparing teachers to provide that type of, I guess, skill set, that's an institution locally that I think could improve. And I think if, I don't know if that's something that could be looked at as part of like how we think about this long-term and where we're going at as a district.
Can I just respond to that? That two people, as I think I mentioned, on our committee, one is from, is a professor at the JC, and the other one is a professor in elementary ed at Sonoma State. And they're, obviously, the JC is bringing that, you know, what they're doing with ethnic studies to our committee, and then the professor who's at in elementary ed is bringing, we're taking, bringing our perspective on ethnic studies, and she's taking it back to her work there at Sonoma State. So hopefully that will make a difference in what they're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Delacruz.
First, I just want to thank you so much for your important work. This is so critical for our students to be able to see themselves in what they learn and to then see a future beyond kind of our history. I do want to echo the need for us to think about this in a much broader way and to think about this from K-12 and that continuum. There are so many moments in elementary education that are so ripe for an ethnic studies lens. And I also want to challenge us, I think as many of the folks on this diastate have, to recognize that it's actually a lens. It's not a box, it's not a month, it's not one class. It's the way that we need to think about the world and need to make sure that everybody around us is able to critically think and be able to process our shared history and to understand it as such. And it's a very alienating experience for so many of us who live a very different history than the one that we're taught and expected to swallow. And so really being able to kind of normalize children's experiences in the world with what they're being expected to accept, I think is just so important for them to be able to succeed in our institutions. And I want to thank Sophia and Mary Cruz for coming and sharing your voices. And it leads me to a question to the committee as to whether or not you are involving students in the way that you're designing curriculum, both from kind of a high school focus but also K-12. Just a question for you. How many students, where are they coming from? What are they telling you? How are they engaged?
Well, we had a group, a small group of students at our student meeting. There were, I believe, four students at that meeting and some young adults who were there as well. And then at our group meeting, there were another group of students, a small group of students, totally different group of students. And at the, at the student meeting, we also had one of the young adults who was there who brought testimony from incarcerated youth that he was working with around issues of wanting to see oneself reflected in the curriculum. What I would really like for us to do is to have those students join our committee and join our effort. And I would love to invite the two ladies who spoke to join us because, you know, that was the thing that was amazing to me about our students, even though they were, it was a small group at both our meetings, they were mighty, they were articulate, and they had said some amazing things that made me feel very moved to and hopeful about our future because these are smart people and they really care. They want to do something that's right for all our students. So yes, I very much want them to participate. Thank you.
The other question and place that I would love to see some focus is, and again, this is a kind of a student focus, is figuring out from students which teachers are doing this well already, that are really doing this in an integrated way and not needing even kind of calling it ethnic studies, but saying, in fifth grade history, we're going to teach the stories of slaves instead of, and people who led the resistance against slavery, instead of just teaching, you know, there were slaves, shucks. And, you know, in that same vein, we are a county that is, that is so blessed to continue to be populated with a very strong Native community, and I would love to know the ways in which we're engaging our Native communities in this process of developing history that is very local, that we are still living every day with Native students in our classes.
Well, and I just want to say that I was really lucky, and part of my work at the district office has been to participate in the disproportionality conversations, and I was at the meeting where we had our Native American parents and some students as well. And so I was able to reach out to them and invite them to that third forum, and several of them came and brought really important perspectives. So we're already reaching out and in contact with them.
Awesome. And the last thing is, I'm super excited to come next Wednesday to your forum.
Yay!
And definitely there and be excited to learn and to help contribute in any way that I can. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you again. I'm, it's hitting very close to home, it's my heart. I'll just tell you a short story because such a passion of mine. At Berkeley, when I was an undergrad, loathe those many years, I took Asian studies. And while it wasn't my major, I took a lot of those classes. And then I became a history teacher, and I taught history for 23 years. And I'm sad to say that I taught the dominant culture history, and it wasn't until I'm watching Ken Burns on television that I understood that Chinese Americans or Chinese were murdered not far from Santa Rosa throughout California and the West. And I sat there in front of the TV crying because I taught this for 23 years. So there you go. I am very proud that we have so many staff in our district who have attended the Museum of Tolerance and the Implicit Bias Workshops, and I think we're continuing that. And as the students pointed out and you pointed out, Elizabeth, that we are wanting to do it with the lens and in everywhere. We want it to be the air we breathe, and we want to have also specific courses. So we want both. And I really like the rollout that we're having where everybody, there's a lot of time, there's experts to guide us and us to reflect and to learn and to grow in this. Because the reading I'm doing now is about culturally responsive teaching and the brain and how, they talk about microaggressions, and we don't even know as adults in the room when we're committing a microaggression, and you're all nodding your heads, so this is nothing new to you, that will shut down a child or shut down that brain or trigger something. And it just breaks my heart because we don't know sometimes we're doing that. So thank you for your work. We're looking forward to having that continue all next year, and I know we'll hear more about it. So thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to commend the school board. Without their support of this path that we've taken beginning when I first got here, we wouldn't be where we are today. And so I have to thank our past board members, our current board members. I think that one of the things I am so excited about is that this board sitting before you will be, will be doing two days of training with the National Equity Project. That's a huge commitment because of their time, but also it shows the commitment to the district and what we're doing around social justice and equity.
All right, we have a discussion now in F5 on the Move partnership update. Thank you so much for waiting patiently.
Good evening again, Vice President Fong, Superintendent Kidmore, members of the board. Tonight, you are going to hear an update about our partnership with On the Move and our move of La Plaza from Lawrence Cook Middle School. The new merger with Cesar Chavez is sort of warranting that, but we're very excited to move it to Lincoln. And as you can see, we have some of our Lincoln members of our community here who are very excited about La Plaza, so hold up your signs. And so we're just thrilled to be able to talk about this partnership, what it might look like, and what it's going to bring hopefully to Lincoln. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lesla Medina and Javi Rivera as they take us through this presentation.
Is it on? Oh, there we go. But first, I really want to thank our youngest leaders, that's all those kids here. They've learned already about government, that you must have an amazing amount of patience since they've been here since quarter five, quarter six. So thank you so much. And we're going to give them a really special lunch sometime in the next week, seriously, because the poor kids haven't had dinner. So that's a good place to start. So anyway, thank you very much for allowing us to be here tonight.
So anyway, thank you very much for allowing us to be here tonight. I, I am the founder of an organization called On the Move. And you wouldn't know about, you might not know that name, but we have been the people running for the last eight years of Voices Center. So we do a huge amount of work with young people emancipating out of the foster care system, mental health system, et cetera, probation, et cetera. But we are newly in the last couple of years and beginning to be involved with your schools, which we're really, really excited about. We do this in a lot, in other counties, but this is kind of new for us in, in Santa Rosa. So, anyway, I really am just here to introduce a really important person, a number of important people, but Javi Rosales, who is the program director. And he's going to mostly be telling you about what this, what this has been about. We've been working on this for the last two years. And the next time we come to see you, which maybe will be agendized in November, we're going to bring like 200 people from Lincoln. And we'll probably have hamburgers ahead of time or tacos or something wonderful. So if they don't, okay, for you two. So anyway, with that, this is Javi Rosales. And I'm also here to answer any questions you have as we go forward.
Good evening. Glad to be here. My name is Javi Rivera Rosales. Both of them were U's, which is great. We just like put them together. It all, it all works. I'm currently the project director for La Plaza Nuestra Cultura Cura. And I will be talking a little bit about, about that and a little bit about our history. So this is a little bit harder to see now that I'm seeing it up here on my computer. It wasn't that hard to see. But don't worry about the vision. I'll just clear that up really quick. So we started about two years ago planning this project around mental health in the Latinx community. And so a group of young emerging leaders in Sonoma County came together to address what were the ideas, how do we start to address this in different ways? Not only thinking outside the box, but expanding so many different ways of how we view things and shifting our lenses to be able to incorporate and engage and encompass a lot of different people in the Latinx community and the greater community of Sonoma County. And so one of the ideas that we, that we came forth with is that we didn't want to recreate programming for the Latinx community in Sonoma County. What we wanted to do is to create more of a unified connectedness between all the different modalities of healing. And so we not only identified that as therapy and also individuals that were providing medication for people who are having severe challenges with mental health and mental illnesses, but we also knew that through our own culture traditions and ways that we grew up from different countries and from being here in the United States, that we have other ways of healing, which are shown through poetry, music, storytelling, dancing, movement, and, and many other different ways of healing that many of us may not be actually aware of. And so La Plaza is, is a space to, to hold that and create that, that energy for folks to actually come and provide that healing. And so that are not only professionals, but they're individuals within the community that have the opportunity and the space to provide that without, without barriers. And so that's kind of the gist of, of our history and where we are today. Two years ago, it was a dream and it was something that we thought of. And now we're, we're actually in a physical space.
Adrian Maldonado, I was a part of the first cohort of the On the Verge group. And as you can see, so just a few pictures up there that I'll speak to is what's our purpose, right? Propósito. I think that's a word that I know I heard growing up, is everything you do has to have a purpose. And I think one started with, one started with our group, right? What was our purpose? Bringing community together from different organizations, different walks of life. And La Plaza is for everyone, right? We're, our purpose is to build trust with, with our families, to, to build trust with all of our youngest leaders and, and really hear them out as well, right? What, what can we do to support them? What can we bring to the table, to La Plaza, where everyone can come and find their way of healing and know and understand that other people are going through it too? And that's okay, right? So I think, so just a few of the pictures, they'll show the town hall meeting that we had, that was us listening to the community, what was needed for, for programming and, and also the leadership team from Cook, I believe, right? Together at the left, left side. So that's, that's our purpose. Bringing community together, bringing healing, bringing trust to everyone, right? The youngest leaders, to young professionals like us and to our parents and our grandparents who, who we, we're here to do everything that we do for them. Thank you.
And so just to list some of the accomplishments really quick for you all that we've already done since we've kind of started and initiated this. One was already mentioned, the town hall meeting that we had, 200 plus community members attend in 2018, which happened to be on Cook Middle School before we actually moved into Cook Middle School. We developed leadership skills for 24 Cook leadership students. So you saw a picture of those folks that we've been working with weekly at Cook, that come and actually spend time at La Plaza. And we do a lot of different things depending on what, what their needs are, but also what are some of the things that we can help to, to build some skills. We're currently coaching and we've coached 15 emerging leaders to help develop La Plaza programming. So this is the third year that we're in. And each, each cohort has been anywhere between 11 to, to 15 folks. And so currently we're running with 15 folks up until September. We've implemented programming for 100, for 120 unduplicated people have participated in the programs at La Plaza. So that's folks that are already using in the short time that we've been running at Cook, which has only been at the beginning of this year. And we're only in, in April. And we developed a safe and inviting and inclusive environment for all. And so the space for me, being a queer Latinx individual, a space is really essential for us to actually be able to, to find our modes and ways of healing and actually places where we can actually communicate. And then these are just some of the pictures of what it looks like now. So we've had artists come in and actually help us with, with decor on the outside, planting, gardening, all these components of everything from the soil to our ways of our mind and communicating are huge components of how we, we want to show the world that we can actually heal. And one of the greatest things is providing this on a school campus because we have access to a lot of students, but also their, their parents and their families to be able to let them know that this is being offered. And so we have all these quotes and pictures all around La Plaza to just kind of hold the space for the stories that we've collected over time from our community members about their challenges, either just in life in general and/or specifically with, with mental health and mental wellness. So yeah. And then these are some of our programs led, so they, they actually lead some of the, the programs. So like I said originally, La Plaza is not in necessarily the, the position to lead programs, yet we might. And, but our, our project is to bring folks together. And so these are just some of the folks that we're working with right now that are currently using our space, but also working directly with us to provide new spaces for healing. And then these are just some of our funding partners currently. So just wanted to, to put those up for folks that, that didn't know. And then why are we moving to Lincoln? And I'll let Tina just talk for a quick second, but I just want to say that as you all know, Cesar Chavez is moving to, to Cook. And so the space is limited. And so we've, we've actually gone to, to Lincoln and we talked with the teachers and just asked them what their needs were and what their wants were. And if they could envision something, what would that look like? And so it just seemed that a lot of the things that they were asking for and needing aligned with a lot of the things that we, that we can, that we're currently, but also could potentially offer in the future. So.
Hi, I'm Tina Boas, a speech therapist at Lincoln Elementary School. And in 20 years of being an educator, I have never spoken in a public forum. The reason why I'm here speaking to you all, and thank God most people have left, is because of this man right here. So I'm also, I'm also the garden coordinator at Lincoln Elementary School. And the first time that I met Javi and Leslie, they came to Lincoln and they got all the teachers together and they got us into groups and they asked us to make a wish list. And on that wish list, I looked at it today, there was a bunch of recurring themes, which were daycare support for our parents, parenting classes, mental health services, technology for parents, and a community garden. So why am I excited about La Plaza coming to Lincoln? Is because their core values align with what our school needs. I mean, it was, it was almost this perfect marriage of, of what we need. And, and our staff is committed to helping our students. And, but, you know, Lincoln Elementary, that our neighboring families are very low income, a lot of them, I have to refer to my notes too. Many of our families in our neighborhood do not have the opportunity to spend quality time with their children. A lot of them have two jobs just to make ends meet. So the more resources that their parents have, the more they can connect with their children and our school. And that the Plaza staff that I have met so far, Javi, Leslie, Dennis, Chad, have impressive backgrounds and credentials in the nonprofit realm, which I feel is, is really beneficial. And to me, they're not, it's not a job to them. It's kind of like their purpose in life. So, and along with speech services that I've been providing to San Jose City Schools for the last 10 years, I'm also the garden coordinator. And for the last four years, I've been working very, very hard to create a community garden. And I've written lots of grants and gotten lots of money and hired lots of garden coordinators. And I'm kind of on, I've, I've had made baby steps towards this dream, but it's never really come to fruition until I met Javi. And the very first time that I met him, we went in that garden and we started planning. And since then, this guy is a man of his word. We, he brought in Dennis, a master gardener. He brought in Martine, this wonderful muralist that's going to create, you know, palis, matunas on the, the back of the library. We're going to be, on, on May the 4th, I encourage you all to come. I'm bringing in 15 yards of mulch from Grab and Grow and shovels and, and wheelbarrows. And we're going to really make this a community garden so our families can actually come, which they have been in the summer times, but not the dream that has always been mine. And with Javi's help and La Plaza's help, he's really going to make it happen. So I, in closing, I'm grateful to La Plaza that has chosen Lincoln. And with the board's help, we can choose La Plaza. So viva La Plaza.
And, and so just for, just for, for you all, I just want to list off some goals that we have, that we have in place. And so we will engage 300 Latinx community members in cultural activities that support mental health and mental wellness. 10 community members will become interns leading La Plaza activities and events. And so I provide specific, I provide supervision, but direct coaching for, for folks to actually step into roles that fit them, that they want to see and create at La Plaza. And so offering that, that oversight. Through surveys and focus groups, La Plaza participates, will report an increased connection, coping skills, resilience, cultural identity and a sense of community, all key aspects of mental health and wellness. We will over, we will offer at least 20 hours of programming per week targeted to families in the Lincoln district neighborhood whose children attend Lincoln Elementary School. And thank you all for, for your time. And thank you again for all the folks behind me for, for sticking out and being here until past eight o'clock. Any questions, comments?
Can I just say one thing? You know, last year when we approached Lincoln about maybe possibly housing Cesar Chavez, and I know that was a little bit challenging, but they did come together as a staff and they started brainstorming with their principal about sort of what they wanted to do for their community and how to bring kids back and sort of talking about really sort of their own ideas about La Plaza before we knew about La Plaza. And so as you said, Tina, it really sort of is this dream that's been able to come true and really be able to support the school. And I just want to thank the staff and leadership for really being open to this and really embracing the next steps. I just wanted to say that publicly.
And then, thank you all very, very much. The bigger picture that I'd like to share with the board is that, you know, I think I've mentioned this before, but we have approximately 100 or more students who should be at Lincoln Elementary and they're not. They're neighborhood kids that are choosing schools outside of Lincoln. So the vision is those 100 students back at Lincoln and more, right? So I just wanted to let the board know that this is on the ground and what we want to do for the families of Lincoln and the staff of Lincoln. We also want to engage back the kids who are leaving and get them back into Lincoln Elementary School.
You guys can clap and scream and do whatever you want to do. So much excitement for this. This is a discussion item. There are no comment cards written. So board, Director De La Cruz.
Sure. So I just want to say thank you, Javi. Your spirit is so special and it's such a gift in our community. And, you know, I love that this follows our, our conversation about ethnic studies because I feel like the philosophy of La Cultura Cura is exactly that. It's having a lens that really values our experiences and recognizes the fact that our culture, when it's activated with love and with a deep respect and understanding of where we come from, truly means that we can connect those dots and close some of those circles that have been broken. So I'm just so grateful for your work and I'm so excited for Lincoln, you guys. Que fortunados son. And pues adelante.
Director Sheffield.
Thank you again for the presentation. And I just had a question about maybe a, a broader sense of what goes into the behavioral health, mental health and the peer approach around this. In this past week, I found myself inserted into a situation with a young woman who was having a mental health crisis and it involved a 911 call. And once I heard that, and she was a young woman of color. And all I could see was the, the fear in her eyes the whole time and how, what, what she must have been dealing with, let alone her family. And they didn't, this was a, a new diagnosis for, for them. And I know bringing the family in is important, but also the, the just sort of, she just looked alone and really scared. And I'm wondering what your program does to, the specifics, I guess.
That's a really great question. And, and one of the things that, and has been an integrity of our vision is to, one of the biggest things that we've seen around mental health and, and, and mental illness and wellness is, is that there's a disconnectedness or not a sense of belonging or trust. And so when we think about trust and people actually finding and reaching out to people that they genuinely trust and authentically trust is really hard to come by. And so as you said, you know, there was maybe a, a sense of not really knowing where to go or there's this fear inside. And so if you don't have anybody to turn to, you don't have a community to turn to, that, that increases so much. And at that point, you know, where do you go? Especially if the services around you are either not at the forefront serving you in the way that, that you, that you need them, whether it could be they don't speak your language, they don't also look like you, so you don't know how to actually communicate and connect with people like that and/or even knowing where to go in the first place. Let alone even having the language to even talk about mental health and mental illness is a huge challenge. And so through our organization and our project is to really not, not directly start talking about, let's bring down these, these terms. It's really to find people at a level of, we are here to build that community and that trust first, so that we can start to have those conversations about mental health and mental wellness in ways that probably weren't happening, happening before. Because to actually engage in real authentic relationships, you have to trust somebody. There has to be a sense of vulnerability and risk. And most people won't take that if they feel like they're living in fear. And so first, our first step is to really build those strong relationships in ways that, that I personally don't always see.
I don't know how old this young person is, but at Voices, we help and, you know, build relationships and help lots of kids who are between ages of 16 and 24 primarily. So if this person happens to fall within that range, that might be a great place to reach out to, you know, in case you.
And being familiar with Voices, that was the first thing that I had suggested with, with the, with the family members.
Great.
Absolutely. And so then.
I just wanted to, I want to answer your question. I want to add just one thing, which is that, you know, besides Voices, which we've been running for over 12 years, I started a place called the Innovations Community Center in Napa. And it's a peer-to-peer center. So it's run by people with mental health issues, for people with mental health issues. And when we first started running it three years ago, I was really, I happen to be a social worker by trade, you know? And I was into, okay, we need to bring people out of their isolation, but we need to get them going to classes and doing things and they can't sit around and blah, blah, blah. can't sit around and blah, blah, blah. And it took me about, I am embarrassed to say, about two years to figure out that just sometimes getting out of your house and showing up at a place and being willing to hang out next to somebody else and have a cup of coffee and just come out of isolation is a huge thing for people. So I've, you know, at La Plaza, there will be plenty of things to do if people choose it, but we're thinking about it as La Plaza, you know, a place where you come and have a cup of coffee, sit next to somebody, play music, do whatever. So I think that that's a large part of what Javi's trying to do.
And then the second, go ahead, I'm sorry.
And then also with other partnerships, like the community counseling, like community counseling is a program, mild to moderate mental health services that can also be offered to anyone that's Medi-Cal eligible, so 5 to 25. So I think that will also provide, you know, resources at La Plaza and be able to do that as well with clinicians.
In addition, one of our partners right now is Humanidad. And so Humanidad is an organization, a nonprofit organization that provides therapy services and also convivencias, listening circles, and one-on-one therapy and counseling for Latinx, Latino, Latina folks in Sonoma County, so Spanish-speaking, but they also serve Sonoma County, but their focus is providing those services that have that cultural identity, that cultural awareness, and that cultural lens to the community. So we have, we're building and strengthening that relationship. And they're actually doing, running services at La Plaza currently.
And then as far as outreach and communication, that you guys are there, you know, as Superintendent Kitamura brought up, the folks in the neighborhood are, a lot of students are going elsewhere. What is in the plans for rolling this out and bringing them, you know, bringing this to their attention and bringing the students back?
Door to door. I mean, one of the things that we've learned is that there is no better way to have word of mouth, but also this face-to-face contact. And so working with, currently, they just ended Latino service providers as a promotores program with young leaders, and she left, but she was a part of it. And so there's about 30 of them that actually, in the last year, have been learning a lot about mental health and mental wellness. And so with them, we're actually going out to the communities in the Lincoln neighborhood to knock on doors. Some of us with vergers, and we have like our shirts, but they're like our logos, La Plaza, nuestra cultura cura. And just really talking to families and parents directly about, this is what's happening, come by, free food. So it's really engaging to be like, there's something happening. We're not going to go to knock on your door and say, hey, we have mental health services. We want to offer those to you. Let's talk about it. Can you invite me in for some tea or something? And so at that point, it's really about engaging first, about like, there's a space. There is a literal space for you. And then from there, carrying on the conversations. We're currently in the motions of hiring a community, community building coordinator. And so that person will be working directly in the communities and not being in the office very much. And it's not about outreach in the sense of I'm tabling, but I'm actually having these conversations and building relationships with people in the community in ways that really need to happen in my perspective and a lot of folks that I've worked with, so.
Yeah. And one more thing, May 4th, a last moment for a plug in the time.
Yeah, so May 4th, 12 to 3:00. It's a short time, but we'll have Martine, who will be doing a community mural with us over by the garden. So the garden will be happening simultaneously. I have some flyers, so I can pass them on to y'all. And we'll also have plenty of food. We'll have performances. We'll have some ceremonial openings, but also closings to kind of hold the space. And also just all the programs that are already running, so that the community can actually talk to the folks that are already providing the services at La Plaza. So they're not just kind of these phantom people, but they're these real people that are right here, right now. The event will be completely in Spanish. If folks need translation, we can work that out, but our priority is the Latino and Latina and Latinx community. So we are currently not in the mood of necessarily translating it to English, but there will be plenty of English speakers and translators right next to you to be able to offer that.
Very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Medina.
So the first thing that came up to me when I read nuestra cultura cura, and I saw the MBOP logo, it was sanación del pueblo. I'm wondering, have you participated with that part of their program or?
Haven't yet. And so with MBOP, we're working directly with Chad, who just came on. And so he's been leading some of, some of his masculinity, intersectionality, and, mic check, that's what it's called, intersectionality and culture. And so there's these different conversations that are coming about, how do we actually address toxic masculinity in our communities, particularly in the Latinx community, and what are the conversations that we're having? So he's helping build a curriculum with some community members to actually see how that rolls out for young folks and providing that in a space for them to actually start to enter into these dialogues about patterns and different ways that we've learned how to be in our communities.
Cool, cool. I'm wondering, because, you know, a lot of what I'm hearing is awesome, what y'all's plans for growth, if any, are long-term or expansion?
It's a great, it's a great question. Because we're just starting off, we're not sure, but I envision more of a unified collaborative between not only a lot of organizations, but one of the things, being in crossover of not having kind of a center for queer folks in Sonoma County, but also a crossover for Latinx folks. It's been really challenging for me to see kind of a centralized place for people to come, like a community center. But sometimes those can have their own energy around it, so it's not necessarily maybe just a community center, but it's something a lot bigger than that. My hope is to actually have our physical space, but also have real deep connections with the communities and schools, because we know that that's a huge part of reaching not only the students, but the families who also need the support.
And I guess for people that have maybe participated within Cook, that maybe have benefited from the services, I'm thinking of like communication of the move to Lincoln and like people that may still want to use the services over there. Is effective communication being done, do you feel, or does more need to be done?
So when we first thought we were gonna, we were gonna stay at Cook for a little bit longer, we were actually planning on doing an opening earlier this year. So it was going to be in February that we were going to do kind of a grand inauguration of opening La Plaza's coming, and that would have been the whole pulling in for a lot of folks. And so we're taking it slowly, partial by partial. And so as soon as we have a full staff, our community building coordinator, then that's when a lot of the stuff will start rolling out and then pulling in all of our connections from our different organizations, but our families as well in the community.
But he wants to know if the Cook families will.
The Cook families will be included in all communities. So it's not just because we're at Lincoln, I want to make sure that we're pulling in all the folks. And so working with the folks at Cook to actually let them know that we're moving. And we've passed out flyers, and we have things that are going on there, so, and we'll continue to do that until our move.
Thank you.
Director McCormick.
Just real quick, I just want to say amazing collaboration and bringing such an innovative and creative organization from the community and connecting it to our schools. What a fabulous thing. It's a total like, if you build it, they will come thing, and I could just see it happening already. I'm really bummed that Director Manieri isn't here tonight, because I think this is right up her alley. And I think that obviously the board is very supportive and excited about this, but I would encourage you to reach out directly to her when she gets back, because I think she would be a great like contact and point person for you on this. Where do we get more information on upcoming events? Because I'm going to be out of town for work on May 4th, so I'm bummed about that. But do you guys have a website or something where we can follow about your upcoming events?
Yeah, so we just got our website up and running, which is exciting, because that's a lot where all of our information will be. And we have an interactive calendar at the bottom. And so that website is laplazancc, which is for nuestra cultura cura.org. Yeah.
Everybody said everything about that, so thank you very much. But I also just want to point out, I want to thank Superintendent Kitamura and Assistant Superintendent Guzman for finding each other, finding Voices on the move, finding each other and bringing it to Lincoln, bringing it to Cook and then to Lincoln, because really, if we're talking about education and wellness and engagement, sometimes what school districts do, it's kind of like fix it or fix them. And it's like fix them, there's something wrong. And this is really an asset-based model, and it is much more positive, much more attractive. It would be much more powerful as well, the way Javi, you were explaining, you're knocking on doors saying, hey, it's more mental health, right? So all good, we're looking forward to hearing more about how things are going.
Because Leslie's here, I want the board to know that Leslie and her colleague Dennis are actually running the, excuse me, facilitation with Cook and CCLA, that merger group. So this is the Leslie that is leading that.
And we're very grateful for that as well. It's a great partnership. And Rick and I were meeting with the merger groups, but now being able to turn it over and have facilitation, they have some exciting stuff coming down the pike, which we'll be coming back to you to talk about, but they do have a little retreat in the summer, and the work will continue to make sure that that merger really is something that's incredibly powerful and positive and benefiting all students.
I'll make one comment specifically about Ana, and that's this. I've worked with a lot of school districts over the years, like lots of them. And I was a principal many years ago, and so I really get school people, and I also get community-based people, you know, and they're different. We have different cultures, you know, some, we don't always know how to, you know, lots of people don't always know how to work together. But I've been, I've been living in both worlds for a long time. But it's unusual to find somebody at a district office who says, look, we're just going to figure it out, okay? We are going to get this done. And I was like, oh my God, if there's somebody who's going to be like that, because I'm like that, I'm like, okay, let's, we're going to get it done. But you don't find it, I have to tell you all, you know, you have somebody very wonderful who has just a get-it-done attitude. And it's really refreshing and it's really an honor to work for your school district, work on behalf of your school district. So I just really, really want to thank you very much.
Very nice. Thank you so much for being here, and everybody else, too.
We are now to F7, a public hearing regarding the conveyance of property and easements to the city of Santa Rosa for public road processes. Assistant Superintendent Rick Edson.
Good evening, excuse me, good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Kitamura. Tonight is the public hearing for the conveyance of a small area of Pioneer High School for public purposes, for public road purposes of widening Fulton Road.
So again, to repeat ourselves again, a public hearing regarding conveyance of property and easements to the city of Santa Rosa for public road purposes. The board will now open a hearing regarding the conveyance of property and easements to the city of Santa Rosa as part of the city's Fulton Road widening project. The property to be conveyed is part of the Pioneer High School campus. Any member of the public may comment. The public hearing on this matter is now open. Do any members of the public wish to comment on the matter? Seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed.
Oh, you had your chance to use the gavel here.
The board will consider all public comments received. Oh, excuse me. Okay. Is there a last part?
That's it? Number 10 is closed?
The meeting is adjourned. Shani, take that, it's 8:30.